Long time no see.
Yeah, good evening. All right. Welcome to the February seventeenth, twenty twenty two, meeting of the Twelton Plan and Commission. Lindsay, we please call the roll.
Certainly, Chair Beers.
Here.
Commissioner Lebick.
Here.
Commissioner Bakuba.
Here.
Commissioner Weimer.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
And Commissioner Coop.
All right, want to apologize for the top of my head missing. I've reoriented my workspace and the camera. My machine is right up against the shelf and so it's not getting anyway. I still have a head, it's just hidden. Also, I'll give you a quick update on the rezoning plan map amendment that we all talked about. A couple of months ago, I missed the first meeting, the first hearing they had at the council, but I was the one on Monday. So I presented basically a shortened version of the deliberations we had and that ultimately we were, you know, looking at just the approval criteria. We should approve this change like it did means our plan for more housing in Twolton in our twenty forty goals. And I recognize that there is a parking problem there. And I said, the way we thought that could be solved is through the permit parking process. But that has to be, Steve pointed out later after the meeting that needed to be citizen initiated. So I think that based on the discussion the council had, that that is something that that they will work on that. So the council deliberated for quite a while and ultimately voted six to one with council president Grimes voting against in favor of the plan map amendment going from RML to RMH. So and then that was that was only the first quasi-duplication hearing of that meeting and I signed off. I'm not sure how long you had to stick around, Steve.
The next, the next item was an annexation, so it was pretty short, thankfully, but yeah, that was a long one.
Yeah, a lot of public comments, none of it in favor. You know, all virtually centered around parking, traffic and the noise and trash that went along with those and some safety issues. So that's, that's where we're at there. Have you folks had a chance to review our minutes from October of twenty twenty one? All right, looking for a motion to approve those.
A motion to approve.
In a second. So, all right, thank you, John Randy, all those in favor of approving our minutes, say hi.
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 All right, it looks like it's unanimous, Lindsay. I don't see any public here tonight to comment on things. We don't have any action items. It looks like Steve is just gonna tell us about what's coming up in the new year.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us tonight. It's gonna be a little while. We don't have any specific action items on the agenda right away, and so I thought it would make sense to make use of an early meeting in the year just to start to think about the things that will be coming down the pike, I think particularly because once we get into April, May, June, there is the potential for things to kind of happen pretty quickly and some things to come along, so. With that, I will pull up the presentation that I shared with you in the packet and walk through it and this is intended to be pretty conversational and informal, so if you have any questions or points of order or anything like that, any way along, please feel free to stop me. I'm just gonna try to rearrange it so I can see most everyone before you get started if that's.
Steve, I like how you have the the old school four by three aspect ratio slides, so used to the widescreen these days.
Yeah, I guess that's just how that's how it comes out.
Not old school, Bill, it's it's classic.
Class, there we go.
Yeah, that's the way that it's doing it. Maybe there's a setting that I'm not doing, so I'll take a look at that later. Okay, tonight's agenda, so potential upcoming items in twenty twenty two, as you'll note through the presentation, some of them maybe will come, some of them won't. They're not necessarily in the community development department's control and so we'll see. So those include the Basalt Creek Mass, excuse me, Basalt Creek Manufacturing Park zoning code update, and I'll talk a little more about that, but that is gonna go forward. Equitable Housing Finance, so those first two are items that are within community developments purview, and so they have kicked off and are going forward. Watermaster Plan. Parks Master Plan. And then a stormwater master plan. And then I'll go over just briefly some other topics that may be of interest to the commission. And then we'll talk a little bit about next meeting in person, so on and so forth. Any questions before I get started? No, okay, great. So the Basalt Creek Mass, excuse me, Manufacturing Park zoning code update, so just a little bit of background for this before I introduce the slides. I think for those of you that have been on the commission for long enough, you'll recall the or at least you have some recollection of the Basalt Creek Concept Plan process that finished in about twenty eighteen and then ultimately the concept plan was adopted into the comprehensive plan and zoning designations were applied to the Basalt Creek planning area at that same time. As the the commission has seen recently, there is a, obviously the Autumn Sunrise subdivision is a is a major piece of the residential development on the east side of Basalt Creek. There is still some remaining undeveloped residential land primarily between Boone's Ferry Road and the Basalt Creek Canyon itself. There's a SEPA Affordable Housing Apartment Complex Project, which the commission approved variance on, and they're getting pretty close to submitting an architectural review application for approval of that project. We've also seen some other interest in other potential housing development in that area. And so that's the east side of the canyon. On the west side of the canyon, there is some amount of residential area primarily on the north part up along Helenius Road, but the the bulk of the acreage in the westerly portion of the Basalt Creek planning area is manufacturing park, which is an industrial zoning. And going a little bit farther in the Wayback Machine, the manufacturing park zoning is a zone that we already had in the Twolton Development Code that was developed in conjunction with the Levitton Urban Renewal Area and is essentially intended to be, it's it's the zone in Twolton that prohibits kind of large large format, low employment density users, it prohibits warehousing and distribution, self-storage, things like that, and is intended for manufacturing uses primarily. That said, it's obviously a district that was created for the Levitton District, which has some large major employers, Lamb, JAE, and things of that nature. And I think that looking at kind of what the future holds for Twolton and then what the future holds for the economy in general, it seems probably not so likely that the type of employment growth that Twolton is gonna see is gonna be along those similar lines. Coinciding with that economic forecasting is pressure from the development community and landowners to allow other uses in the manufacturing park zone that are not currently allowed, particularly things that are oriented more towards warehousing and distribution, which were discouraged in the Basalt Creek Concept Plan and then the Comprehensive Plan. And they're also discouraged in some of the other documents that are feeding into this update, including the Economic Opportunities Analysis that the city completed as part of the twelve and twenty forty project. And then more recently, which Commissioner Thompson was a part of the Basalt Creek Urban Renewal Area, also had some some goals and policies associated with it. And so kind of owing to the pressure from the development community, and I think just kind of seeing the writing on the wall, that the zoning code is probably a little bit outdated and it needs to be freshened up to help it meet some of those larger policy goals that happened after the manufacturing park zoning was developed earlier in the two thousands or so. The city is undertaking endeavor to update the manufacturing park zoning, and so we're engaging a consultant to help us with the process of doing a code audit and looking at the existing uses and then providing they have a subconsultant that will provide some additional economic forecasting analysis to help project uses that might be successful in that zone. And then there's also a subconsultant for traffic to make sure that whatever new uses or or changed uses are introduced into the zone still allow for the traffic system, which was approved as part of the Basalt Creek Comprehensive Plan to function. So we had the request for proposals from qualified consultants ended on February eleventh. We got unfortunately only one qualified consultant, but they were highly qualified. They were really well qualified. They had great credentials. They had done some similar work for other cities. It's a firm called HHPR. They're kind of primarily engineering services oriented, but they have a small planning group. Some of the people I've worked with in the past, and so I think they'll be a good fit, so. I'm sorry, I'm not, let me just bring these all in. Okay, so I talked a little bit about the first goal, which is to update the meaning the Basalt Creek Manufacturing Park zoning district consistent with those documents that I previously mentioned. And then the secondary goal, which those of you who are on the council or excuse me, on the commission, a little while ago, but not quite recently, so Commissioner Weimer and Commissioner Lettich, this will be a little bit unfamiliar to you, but I think you'll get up to speed very quickly. We're anticipating using this exercise to update the comprehensive plan to specifically update the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan under the economy chapter to match the strategic actions which were found in the Economic Opportunities Analysis. And so this is continuation of the twelve and twenty forty work that we were not able to do previously. And so the timeline is, it's obviously the RFP ended and we're engaging with the consultant right now to deal with the contracting elements of setting up the relationship, and then we're looking to have a kickoff meeting pretty soon. And then I don't have the scope of work in front of me, but it's the the rough timeline here on the slide still holds that that we would have spring, summer kickoff starting now, basically. And then I think obviously the Planning Commission would have interaction with this topic, particularly at the adoption stage. Although I think that I would like to try to, if I don't remember what's built into the scope, but I think I'd like to at least even if the consultant doesn't come here with the projects, because I don't know that that's in the scope, I'll at least bring a project update kind of midpoint the way through so that that you all can see what's going on and then I can get your feedback and hopefully feed that in before we get to the adoption ready point. Before I move on, any questions about this project? Mr. Lettich.
Steve, is that Economic Opportunities Analysis available on the website somewhere?
It is, yeah. I can, I can, let me just make a note of that. I'll send, I can send out, I, because the RFP had all these links in them, I can just send these links out very easily. I'll just send them to you.
Thanks.
Of course. Was there another question? No. All right, I'll move on to the next. Yeah, Ursula, thank you. Quick on the draw. All right, so that whole housing financial, I'm gonna learn from my mistakes and put more content on the slide before I start talking. So the equitable housing, and it's actually equitable housing funding plan is, I think, the term that we've refined this into, but it's the the gist of the plan is the same. So for those of you that remember the housing production strategy that the commission helped work on and then the council accepted the work last spring. This is one of the first implementation action items of the housing production strategy. And so just for a quick refresher, the housing production strategy was effectively a five-year plan that included potential strategies and actions for the city to explore further to assist various types of housing production, including affordable housing production, not limited to it. Certainly, things aimed at increasing homeownership opportunities and other types of of things. A little side note, we had originally been awarded a grant that would have allowed us to do more work under this, and that project would have include included a comprehensive analysis of city zoning districts and looking for opportunities to upzone. Obviously, the Twolton Heights kind of came along in the midst of that potential project, and so although that that project's got sidelined, the council approval of that that upzone specifically for the zoning to residential or load, whatever it was, RMH Residential Medium, high, high density, I guess. That that actually meets one of those goals and helps helps satisfy the part of the project that we didn't get the grant for. So back, turning back to this project, so the goal is to achieve more affordable, fair and equitable housing outcomes. Well, I'm sorry. By ensuring equitable housing, housing services and housing related resources are funded at a reasonable level, given the needs. And so just add a little bit of depth to that, because that may only scratch the surface. Effectively, what this project is doing is it's going to analyze different potential funding streams, some of which the city has control over now, some of which the city would have to take action to adopt and analyzes their potential impacts on the city's ability to help support affordable housing and then conversely, what kind of financial impact they would have in in the sense that they would have to be backfilled. And so a couple of examples are system development charges, and so those are things that are impact fees that development pays for that go to pay for public utilities, so obviously transportation system charge that pays for increased road capacity in the future is a classic one. Sanitary sewer, water, strong water and so forth. And so those are costs that, you know, may get harder for an affordable housing project to pencil. And so many cities across the country and in Oregon have looked at waiving or reducing those fees in order to help support affordable housing. Of course, in Oregon, there needs to be some sort of backfill revenue source to make up for them in their absence. And then there are some other opportunities, including some amount of funding from urban renewal. And so obviously we have the Basalt Creek Urban Renewal Area, and then the council is working towards adoption of an urban renewal area in the downtown area. And so there's potential opportunity for some funding to come from that. And then the last, which would be a more proactive thing that the city would do is examining the potential for what's called a CET or a construction excise tax. And so that is a value-added tax on the value of construction of new development, and it could be just residential. It could be commercial, industrial, it could be some kind of mix of those two. And that would basically go into a fund that would then be used for affordable housing and obviously there are certain pros and cons to that. And so part of this exercise is gonna be enough to analyze some of those things and potentially project how much how much construction excise tax could potentially be generated based on kind of past trends in building activity. Mr. Bakuba.
All right, it's a sliding scale, SDCs a part of this conversation at all, or?
Not, not currently. I think that there's some, there's some limits on how that can be done in Oregon, which I'm not, I'm not sure about, but in general. Like you're talking about like for dwelling size, for example, like an SDC.
Yeah, actually, I've got a real example. So a buddy of mine is developing a former church into apartments in Canby. And he wants, I think it's seventeen units or something like that. And he wants to offer it kind of below market rate, because he's interested in getting section eight vouchers. But Canby, the SDC is like sixteen grand per unit regardless. And so, you know, we were talking the other day about sliding scale and how the idea is that, you know, you, the SDC is based off of the overall square footage of the dwelling instead of just a fixed rate per.
Yeah, and I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to to go back and look at it, look at that question, maybe I'll, I can send something out. My kind of understanding and recollection, because SDCs are highly regulated in Oregon. And there's the whole process for how you establish SDCs, but my understanding is is that because the, because they're an impact fee and particularly impacts are like unit generated generally, or like in the, so in the case of like transportation, they're unit, but then there's a what's called an ITE code for each unit. So like an apartment would get a different transportation SDC per unit than a single family house. And a townhome might get a different, a different one, but different apartments don't get a different unit. And then for like sewer, it's it's an equivalent dwelling unit, and so it's not, it's not based on unit size necessarily. It's usually based on like fixtures or estimated amount of occupants kind of based on the, based on the type. But that, but basically, though, what I understand is is that because the setting of the methodology is based on certain things that are in specific Oregon state laws, that there's there's limited ability to kind of go back and revisit them. But let me look in that question and I'll I'll send out some more information on that to the rest of the commission, because it's it's an interesting topic for sure.
And so didn't that contrast with this potential model where the city is actually funding, providing funding for the SDCs on the lower end for, you know, projects deemed you know, within the kind of purview for the equitable housing funding plan and then taxing on the higher end to, you know, kind of effectively achieve the same.
Well, I mean, they have, they would have to backfill it somehow. And so I mean, that's the tricky question is is that if especially in a city like Twolton where we don't have a lot of alternate revenue streams, like it could be, you know, it might have to be general funds. Which is a struggle for, you know, a city that our expenses grow with inflation, but our, you know, our, our general fund only grows by if we add assessed value through new construction. And then the little three percent every year that the Oregon law allows for for a growth factor. So that's, that's part of what's gonna, what's gonna be analyzed, I think, is is that both the impact and then also what is the impacts to other, like, you know, was the impact to for to ability for an affordable housing project to come here, but it's also an impact on how would we do that? And so obviously, you know, CET is one way that we get backfill through a CET. To your point about having taxes on something else, there's still, I mean, as with anything, it's it's tricky, because and the the same would be true for urban renewal is is that the urban renewal districts were just established, and so they're not gonna be generating revenue for, you know, for quite some time, for, you know, at least five, ten years from now. And the same thing for a CET is that it's not, you know, even if we started levying a CET on new construction projects, it would take some time for the fund balance to grow. Whereas, whereas waiving SDCs would be an immediate, right? So we'll be, we'll be coming back to you with more information on this one. Unlike previous efforts, the anticipation, given the nature of the project, is that this kind of more like the housing needs analysis will have its own standalone project advisory committee, and we won't be asking the planning commission to be the whole of the advisory committee, but rather we would have you as a supplemental advisory committee, kind of more similar to other things in the past. All right, Watermaster. So if I write a link to information about it, there's not, this one potentially could come in twenty twenty two, but it's it's a little unknown. Right now I tried to get a final answer before tonight, but I wasn't able to. It's obviously quite outdated, and so there's particularly in the resiliency area a need to to do an update to it, given how old it is. The other piece of it, and this, this is not included on the website or any documents, but the other piece of the puzzle is is that because it's so outdated, this goes to the previous points that we were just talking about, is the system development charges that are charged for water are based on the Watermaster Plan, and so without a more up-to-date and accurate capital improvement plan for the for the water system, there's, there's not the ability to raise system development charges to correspond to the needed system. And so just a example of this is that for the Autumn Sunrise subdivision, which you all looked at recently. Ultimately, the city is going to need to build another reservoir at its existing B-level reservoir site. That's something that is a need based on the demand generated from the development. But that's not a need that was identified in the twenty thirteen Watermaster Plan, and so the city is spending SDCs collected on that project, but they're not charging SDCs based on the existence of that project. That's correct, Ursula, the, the Norwood Reservoir would not, and it, there's the need for an additional reservoir. And so as part of I don't remember how how much this detail is emphasized during the hearing that we had, but part of the subdivision actually includes a dedication of property within the subdivision just to the south of the Norwood water tower for ultimate construction of another water tower in the long term. Mr. Can. Sorry, I can't quite hear you. Sorry, I can't quite hear you or you're muted.
Is that any better?
There we go.
So I, I think I'm hearing you say, is that the work they were doing with Clean Water and BES and trying to deal with ODOT putting the road in there also? But to keep the water reservoir somewhere that wasn't going to be right alongside Boones or is that a different thing?
Um, that might be a different thing. The, so I mean, there's two things. One is that there's a sewer, sanitary sewer pump station. Um, that's on Norwood, um, that's just. That's closer to I five and then there's the, and then there's going to be an additional water reservoir ultimately constructed. Um, south of the existing water reservoir that's kind of tucked in next to our horizon.
Yeah, the one that we just planned approved at the last meeting?
The, um. The subdivision, yeah, yeah. Exactly, yeah. Um, so just want to put this on your radar. It's, it should be a pretty straightforward approval. Um, as far as being a planned text amendment and updating the city's um, existing Water Master Plan map. Which is in the call man. Moving on, Stormwater Master Plan. Um. So I'm not sure how much you all remember, but um, in twenty twenty-one, the commission did make a recommendation of approval on. The Stormwater Master Plan, which in that case, you know, if you go back to the last slide and think two thousand thirteen. Is a while to uh, update the master plan. That one was last updated, I think, in something like nineteen three. Um, and so it's really way overdue. Um, and so it was recommended for approval by the planning commission and it was initially approved by the city council. And then it was withdrawn, uh, based on um, feedback from some of the area residents in the Basalt Creek. Planning area, um, who wanted to see additional analysis happen specifics of the Basalt Creek area. The, the long and the short of it is is that the Stormwater Master Plan provided some updates to the existing. Capital improvement plan relative to the existing areas of the city, but. Because in Basalt Creek area, there were no um, city or called regional detention facilities. So that would be like a, a roadside kind of facility that you may have seen if you drive by. That takes a bunch of different stormwater from all kinds of different projects in one place. And then is, is built as a capital improvement. Instead, what's happening in the Basalt Creek area and you saw this with the Autumn Sunrise subdivision. Is that they're building um, their own. They're, they will ultimately become public stormwater detention facilities, but they're basically scaled. And designed specifically commensurate with the individual development and they're not. They're not scaled, they're designed with future growth in mind like a regional detention facility might be. And so the city is going back and looking at potentially whether or not there's any opportunity for that. And then they're also. Um, trying to do um, basically uh, an analysis of the stormwater basin. In the Basalt Creek area to look at existing conditions and then try to. Analyze where improvements might be made. Um, and that, those improvements are more so, um. Where stormwater kind of relates to um, erosion and sediment runoff. And so. Stormwater is obviously one goal, which is to collect and detain water. From new development, but it also has a secondary goal, which is to limit the um, outfall of stormwater. Um, in a way that does not cause erosion or sediment to fall into waterways, which. Um, has water quality implications and then of course has all kinds of environmental implications as well. So, um, the work is in progress. Um, the city is going through and trying to get property owner entry. Obviously, some of the property owners are willing to have the city come on and analyze the conditions. Some potentially will not. And so depending on the success of that work. Um, that'll kind of inform how detailed the plan gets in the future or whether or not the plan. Goes back to some extent, um, more similar to how it was planned to be, which was just to. Note that future development was going to have to do its own stormwater detention and basically analyze the system. Each time to make sure that they weren't contributing to an adverse impact. My understanding just initially is that I think that there is going to be some success, at least in determining existing conditions. And helping future development, um, better identify its own impacts to. Um, particularly to the Basalt Creek area. And so we'll stay tuned for that, I think. Um, as you're probably all experiencing in your own personal lives, um, everyone's really busy and it's hard to get anyone to do. Anything for anything contractors for what you might, you know, maybe doing around your house or vendors for those of you that. Work in those kinds of fields. And so it, it's kind of similar is is that, you know, people are using. Are really good, but they're stretched thin on multiple projects and. Um, so it's, it's a little bit hard to project the timeline for this work. Um, the Basalt Creek Parks Plan, so this is actually pretty exciting and I would encourage you to. Um, navigate over this site at some point and take a look at it because it's a really cool plan. It builds on the two thousand eighteen Basalt Creek Concept Plan that I mentioned before, which. Um, identified kind of generally that there is a need for uh, parkland in the area, but didn't. Um, specifically analyze potential park sites or get very specific as to what the parks needs might be. And so. Um, just this year, um, the Parks Department, I think is actually twenty twenty-one when they started the work, but. They, uh, they engaged a consultant to help them develop a, a basically a subarea. Um, Parks Master Plan. So this would be an up, an update to the existing Parks Master Plan, which was um, updated not that long ago. And uh, primarily what they did was they um, did a bunch of public engagement, I. Um. I'm not sure how much any of you interacted with it or saw it, but um. Basically, uh, to kind of figure out what potential park users and citizens within Twolton. Um, what kinds of amenities and things like that they were looking for in new parks and. Um, as well as doing a pretty significant amount of trails planning, which built on the work from the twenty eighteen. Concept plan. And so it's pretty exciting. It envisions kind of some additional trail connections. Um, there's kind of an existing, um, very small trail segment from Graham's Ferry through, I think it's the, um. Trying to blank on which subdivision it is there that's kind of at the south. Edge of the city, but there's, there's essentially a pathway into the Basalt Creek that. The beginning, I guess, the headwaters of the Basalt Creek Canyon. Um, and so the Parks Plan calls for it to be extended and then it also calls for um, examination of a potential over crossing. For people to be able to get um, from the west side of Basalt Creek, which is where that path is. Over to the east side and some additional pedestrian connections. And so it's, it's pretty exciting. Um, and recently, as you see on the slide, the council um, accepted the work by resolution and. Uh, the Parks Department is planning to ultimately update our existing pedestrian maps and then their own. Uh, master plan and then probably some of the comprehensive plan language in the Parks Chapter. Um, based on this new plan. The hitch here is that, um. Based on the feedback and this actually ties into the Stormwater Master Plan, um, from the particular. Resident or set of residents that had concerns about the stormwater, the parks, the parks. Subarea plan for Basalt Creek is going to wait until the Stormwater Master Plan is ready to be adopted to come back for adoption. And so even though it, it is ready, it's, it's, it's going to wait. So hopefully we'll see. Both of those plans this year. I'd really like to um, get those adopted, but we'll see.
Hey Steve, um, how does that Basalt Creek. Uh, Parks Plan relate to the council considering a bond measure for November or does it at all?
Um. It's a, it's a good question. I mean, I think the, the answer is, is that. One of the reasons why, even though Parks was, the Parks Department was aware of the need to wait for, um. To wait for the completion of the Stormwater Master Plan to get full adoption of the Parks Master Plan. Part of the goal was to have. Um, visibility into the work that they had done and to potentially, um. Get council buy off on site acquisition. And so the, there's. That's a long winded way of saying that if they find a site before the bond passes, they're going to try to acquire it. Um, with existing funds that they have and any kind of, um, you know, financing opportunity that they, that they have. In general, my understanding is is that the bond is primarily directed at maintenance. Um, rep and operations rather than um, capital acquisition. And that that's actually one of the, that's, that's really kind of the, um. That's one of the tough parts of, of the park system is, is that I think that, um, thanks again, Commissioner. Um, that everyone sees a very robust park system, but um, there's the. Last, I think the last year primarily, but it, it took a few council sessions. Um, the Parks Department really presented a thorough inventory analysis. Of assets within the parks, which are overall great, that are not doing so well and, um. Obviously, I think the, the commissioner all knows this, but system development charges that are collected for perks can't, can only be used for. Uh. New, new parks, they can only be used to add capacity to the park system, just like. Any other system development charge. And so that's where the bond comes in is is that the, the Parks Department was, is, uh. Has a, has a large maintenance and operational backlog that they need to address with the existing parks. That's, that's a long trip.
Um, I believe that the city for Tiger Dan Twolton has been in cooperation also with the schools. Because they most recently had a, a public dual meeting about the cities using the schools' fields for. Things in the summers and parks and whatnot. And that was part of their deal with the bond that's on the page here about trying to. Funnel money away from having to purchase that and then work on something else. So that might be where Dan's going.
Yeah, that could be.
I was just curious, do you have any sense as to what size the bond would be or are they being cagey about that?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. I can look, I can look at it. I sat, I know the, they presented information. Um, to the, to the council on it. And so I don't know. I don't know where, I know that they've done some polling so far, but I don't know if they've gotten to that level of detail where they've. Where they're doing polling based on kind of like what is a amount that, that citizens who are supportive of it would. Would support as well. But I can look into it and.
I took the, the survey earlier, the one that Ursula posted and there, there was no dollar figures in there, but there was a. How interested would you be, would you be willing to do a bond and then a kind of yes, no, maybe a lot? But no numbers of what the bond might be.
Yeah, and that was with, that was exactly what they presented at council was, was, was that information. And so. I'm guessing that they're probably gonna have to do that at some point, but. Um, I can look and see if there's any more information that's publicly available yet. And if not, um, I can. Hopefully let you know these when they anticipate getting to that level of detail. Any other questions on this one? All right, thank you.
Did it freeze up?
Yeah, Oregon, I was just reading, sorry.
No, you're good.
Um, so other topics of interest, um. And I don't know, um, this, this topic is, is actually, it's a, it's a big one among. Uh, professional planners and staff. I, if not, I don't think I've seen it covered. In news at all or, or anything like that. So some of you may or may not be familiar with it. Um, it's, eh, it's a, it's a topic that's huge and probably deserves its own, um. Own presentation. Um, we did one just recently, um, Cody. Field, our new management analyst, who does the intersection between lane use and transportation for our department. Um, and I was, I was there along with him to support it, but it was his presentation. Um, gave an update on this, uh, the, I provided a link to kind of a, I think it's a one pager. At this link, but. Basically, the kind of long and short of this, excuse me. Is that, uh, this climate friendly and equitable communities is a, is a, is rulemaking that's happening at the state level. That was brought on by Governor Brown's executive order on climate change, directing state agencies to. Um, update rules where they, where they could affect change to, um. Help address climate goals, which, uh, from the state's perspective, they're sorely behind on. And so they've in, what, in twenty twenty-one, but really it's happened. It's been happening most fast and furious at the end of twenty twenty-one and early into twenty twenty-two. Um, the State Department of Lane Conservation Development is developing new drafts. Um, what are called Oregon Administrative Rules that, um, cities would have to. Draft their own regulations to comply with. And there's two major areas of compliance. Um, one is parking. And so the DLCD is looking at requiring cities relative to specific kinds of uses. And then in specific areas, primarily like a downtown area for new parking, um, or new development, excuse me. Would have to develop, would, they have to develop a, a zero minimum parking program. Or some other complicated, um, type of parking demand management, like a metering or. Um, other smart parking kind of program. Um, excuse me. And then there's some requirements in addition as part of the parking to uh, lay conduit and build. Um, EV ready parking spaces in conjunction with any. Um, new development that built, that does build park. And then, so that one's a little bit more tangible, but still hard to kind of understand how. It's actually going to work out in practice. And then the other piece of it is, um, updates to transportation system plans. And I won't, I guess, bore you with too many details at this point. And with some point, we'll come to the commission once we. Have more information on the rulemaking and provide a, a better presentation, probably maybe in April or May. Um. Or June even after the rulemaking is done and we know what's actually going to be applicable. Um, but basically what the transportation system planning updates are intended to be is they're intended to. Um. Make it harder to add vehicular capacity improvements. Um, to cities. And so obviously for a city like Twolton, which receives a great deal of pass through traffic and not. City owned generated traffic, um, making it harder to accommodate. That growth is certainly something that we're concerned about and keeping an eye on. And so. We don't really know how this is all going to pan out and it's even among some of the smartest people that have looked at this topic. They don't really understand it. It's actually a little bit frustrating because the state. Um, Department of Lane Conservation can, has administrative roles that affect so many different facets of lane use and transportation. And so they have, you know, a, a subject matter expert in every area. But then they're conversely expecting cities to kind of be able to digest it all, which is really hard. Uh, when, when we don't have the corresponding same amount of staff to do it. So. The goals, I think, ultimately fit in with the, the twelve and twenty forty goals. And I think potentially even fit in with some of the council goals for, um, the downtown urban renewal area. I think that there's also a sense that, um. That they're gonna, that the rules are going to be very prescriptive in a way that is not desirable and that, um. Just seeing who's on, you know, who the state has selected on the Rules Advisory Committee. There's very few people from cities. There's almost no. There's no one from a metro area city on the Rules Advisory Committee. Um, and that they did a good job of getting diversity on the committee, but as far as practitioners, it's really been kind of limited and. Uh, so we'll, we'll see how it works out, um. In the future, but just want to put that on all of your radar because I think we'll be. Doing more work in that area in the future, maybe not this year, but certainly soon. And then, um, I mentioned, alluded to this a little bit, um, so the, uh. Economic Development Staff of the city will be working with the council to, um. Develop a core area, what did I call it on the slide, sorry. Core area reinvestment area or reinvestment plan. It, it's a, it's a moving target. I'll just say that. Um, the. There's a desire not to use the word urban renewal. And so. Staff is, has been trying to come up with a catchy name. And so the, um, the thing to note about this is that the tentative plan is, is that. Um, there's going to be work done on it spring and summer and that the. Planning Commission will get presented the plan in November of this year. Um, I think that there's probably going to be opportunities for interaction with it before. And even if our economic development staff doesn't come to the commission with it, I'll provide some information about it through a future update. Um, and then the last thing that I would mention tonight, um, and we can open up to questions or discussion. About the return to. Return to in person meeting next is that. Uh, our city manager has, uh, suggested. Based on some of her conversations with council that there's a potential lane. This year to do a small. Updates of the development code. So, um, those of you that remember our. Uh, twelve and develop, development code improvement. Uh, program TD CIP. In. Twenty eighteen. So it's now getting on to be five years old. And so we've lived with it for a while. And it's certainly been improved, an improvement over our previous code. Uh, but we've also had the opportunity to kind of both internally, um, and with the development community and other stakeholders. You know, identify areas where things can be more clear or improved. And so the intention. Of this and, and we'll work with the planning commission more on what this might look like if we were to go forward with it. But the intention would be to. Um, not make necessarily substantive policy updates. But to make potentially some updates that maybe reflect existing policy or clarify existing code. In line with. Existing policy. Any questions on these items or we jump to the next? All right. Okay. So I just want to start off by saying that, um, we, as I mentioned in, in email, room availability, um, is, has been a little bit tough. Lindsay has been working diligently on trying to find a room, but it's, it's just hard like. But COVID has thrown us for a loop, like the library, community room where some of you have met or. Had other meetings in the past, there's, there's storing checkout materials there. They're not ramped up to. For public meetings again. And that's, it's the same for many of the other facilities. Around the city that there's something else going on or they're not staffing it and so forth. So. I think that for the time being, just based on the feedback, we're, we're going to keep the meeting on Thursday for the time being. And if we. Just need to revisit in the future, we can do so. But I think let's just, we're going to stick to it. And Lindsay is, Lindsay is going to get the. Um, hard task of just trying to find us a good spot. And the one thing I'll also just add to it, you just quick show of hands is that. One thing that might aid us, and I'll just say that the thing that's really. Uh, causing a challenge is that. Court has also moved to our development services building and they use the, the room that we would use on Thursdays and they use it like thoroughly late in the day. And so I guess the question is that. Is anyone opposed to starting the meeting at seven versus six thirty? We're all here at seven, I suppose. So it makes sense. So that's, I'm just trying to give ourselves as much options as possible to. To kind of buffer the meeting because, um, the meeting room that we have is really nice. Um, and it's big and new. And so that would be advantageous and it's our building. And so we control it. And so we don't have to. We've, we've had some. We've had some in the past negative experiences with like the police building where if no one was, no one was, no one at the police was there to let us in. We. We got stuck and had to call someone out of bed to come, or not out of bed, but away from home to come let us into the building from facilities. And so. It's just better if we can try to do it in our. In our own space. Anyway, with that out of the way, um, obviously, as you know, um, and I think I heard in the news today that the mask mandate is, is going to end. Maybe even sooner than March thirty first, um, just because of staffing and. Vacations and the fact that we don't have any current action items, we're looking probably at the next meeting date being in April. And that is the third Thursday. In April. I think we've talked about this before, but just as a brief reminder. As of January one, there's a new state law that requires that if we have. Uh, in person, public meeting that we have to include a hybrid component. And. And so I guess the questions are that, um, I know Chair Beers, I think I've heard you on this one that you're interested in coming back in person. Um, to meet when possible. And so I guess is, is everyone feel comfortable with that? Okay. Well, that's, that's an e- easy first answer. And then I guess the, the second question is, is the. Which we've been kind of exploring, but. And I, I think that I have a recommendation to you, but I can lay out the options for you. So I mean, from a technical perspective, we could just provide like. A teleconference and a phone. Um, to satisfy our hybrid meeting requirement. I think from. My recommendation is that from the perspective of providing genuine public engagement. In a hybrid setting that having like a zoom option for people is, is a better practice. Um, and so I think that unless anyone's opposed to that, that's the goal that we're going to try to do is make it so that. You all can meet in person, then people can zoom in. And then that would also potentially open up the option. Well. I'm leading into my last question, but it would potentially open the option for some, for any of you who like traveling for work or. Whatever reason you could zoom in too. You wouldn't have to necessarily come in person. And so that's the, that's I guess the final question that we have for you. And I'm happy to let you all discuss amongst yourself. Other pieces to this puzzle. Is that. By law, we can make the hybrid meeting, like in our meeting notice, we can say you must request. The hybrid meeting, you know, forty eight hours in advance for us to make accommodations for it. Or we can just, and. Lindsay and I have been diligently looking at this and we believe that it's possible to do this. We can just always turn zoom on. And if people want to drop in, they can. And if they want to drop in part of the way through the meeting, they can. And they don't have to register first and. And so I guess that's the, that's the final question for the commission is, you know. Do you have a preference for whether or not we do it kind of the harder way, which means you have to put in some effort. As a, as a member of the public to, to participate, or we just kind of make it easy where anyone can just drop in.
I, I think I'm with Ursula on this one. Keeping it always running, I think is better.
How are we gonna mic people?
Um, so the, the way that, the way that it's going to work is, is that. The meeting room, and this is where. This is where like the options piece comes in is that meeting room that we have access to that is in our building. Basically, the room is kind of like a giant computer. Like there, there is a room computer basically. And so the microphones that we have available tie into the room computer. And so it's just as though like you have a laptop and you have a microphone. And so the room computer has. Microphones like that we lay out on the desk. And so. We put one in the center of the desk where you all are and then people hear that.
Okay.
And then you would see, and then what we're going to try to do is we're going to try to have, well, we'll probably end up doing is we'll probably have. Like this, the screen, the large projector screen will be like, let's say, you know, the presentation I had on the screen. But it'll be, but there'll be a little zoom window off to the side. We haven't figured, we haven't finalized the details, but we have our, our I, our IS folks working on it, but. We've confirmed that it's possible. And then basically what there'd be is there'd be a wide. Uh, a wide angle like two hundred and seventy degree or something like that camera at the front of the room. And so the person out in Zoom land would see all of you. They wouldn't see much more unfortunately, because when the rooms were built, this wasn't in spec, this wasn't a. This wasn't an identified need or a possibility. But so they'll see you all and. Of course, but via zoom through the computer, they'll be able to see whatever materials are being presented through the PowerPoint. Or whatever. Um, they won't be able to see necessarily the person presenting, they'll be able to hear them. And that's, that's kind of the way it'll work. And I think what we can do, well, so I guess a couple of further options is one. We can. We can, assuming that we can get room capacity. By April, we can just try to, and the mask thing ends and all that stuff. We can just meet in April and try it. And like you all test it, or alternatively, we can just. You know, us as staff, we can try to kind of do a mock up and then. You know, send out a little like video of how it worked, like, you know, record the zoom meeting. And then you can see what it looks like from the perspective of someone zooming in.
I think having the, um, permanent zoom option going forward is the right thing to do. Uh, and I think, I think it's definitely. There's solutions out there for what, what you're describing. I'm thinking about my team at work and though we use Microsoft Teams. Like sometimes last week, there were three of us in a meeting room and five of us online and we were all able to make it work. So.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have, we, I mean, we don't have anyone in the public tonight. And so for some things, we're not, we're not going to. And I think that. The one thing I, I will share with you all that we learned from the Twilight Heights hearing is that actually. A number of people preferred to come in and testify at the poll center. Rather than kind of zoom in on their own computers, even though they could. And so. It also may be that people want, you know, will want to take the opportunity to come in and interact with you face by, face to face. So. Um, I mean, we're happy to, we're happy to work, work through it all with you or we're happy to try to like dial it in and test it out before. Whatever. Whatever direction we receive, we shall do. Well, that's all, I think that's all, that's all I had for tonight. I just wanted to, like I said, since we won't be meeting for a little while, tee up some of our potential. Things for. Um, what's to come and. Yeah.
Steve, I, I had one thing to, um. I don't know what our legal requirement is for. Establishing who's the chair and vice chair of the commission. And we typically do that annually. And I don't ever remember exactly. It's never on the first meeting of the year. It's always later. And I, I'm not advocating we do it tonight. Just, uh, kind of want to get it out there that we will need to do it, I think sooner than later.
Yeah, I think you're right. I don't, I. Do not remember what the charter says off the top of my head. I know that I saw it. I think I saw it in last April's meeting agenda. So. Um, we can just put it on the agenda for next. And do that. And then I guess the other thing that actually, which I didn't have on the slides, but just reminds me is that. Provided that we can get. Uh, our former vice chair, St. Clair back here, I'd like to just do a quick recognition for her as well. Even if she ends up, you know, wanting to be via zoom. Uh, but. I think that would be nice.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Steve. All right. Uh, anything else tonight, folks for, uh, Steve or Lindsay or each other? Yeah, Zach, go ahead.
Actually, mine's just a quick question for Steve that I didn't think of it until we were about to start the meeting, but it doesn't need to be in the meeting proper. It's to do with. I don't know if Steve can hang out for a minute after. Question.
Absolutely. Yeah, you bet. Yeah.
Okay. Then, uh, would one of you like to move for us to adjourn? All right. Thank you, Randy. Uh, and we're adjourned. All right, folks. Um, see you in April.
Yeah, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Yeah.
Good night.
Uh, so my, my question, Steve, is just, it's actually pretty straightforward. Uh, between the last time we met and today, I actually got a job, which is great.
Congrats.
I'm very excited. I am a, uh, housing and community development specialist with Washington County, which is marvelous. Um, however. Although what I'm working on, I'm doing emergency rental assistance under the CARES Act. And the Home Act. Uh, so nothing that touches what we're doing here is in my job. However, there are individuals. In my office that are working on things like the, um. Affordable housing development that's going on in. Uh, down south. Um, I don't touch any of that personally, and I don't know anything about what's going on there, but I do know people that are involved in getting that up and running and, and providing county support. And I just wanted to ask you a question about. Uh, what, if anything, I needed to do to, um, report my new position to the city? Is it being my sitting on this council and or? Would I need to recuse myself because I work in the same office that's managing some part of that?
I don't think so. I'll again, look into that question before. I mean, so. We normally, I mean, the normal answer is that we've not really tracked people's employment before because the planning commission doesn't have. Like a specific composition requirement. I know that. You're not allowed to be employed with the city and on the commission, but.
Right.
I'm not aware of anything more than that. I mean, I can look into it.
I knew I couldn't be employed by the city and the commission. I know that I could be employed by another city and with the commission. I wasn't certain if I could be employed by the county. Which creates policy which could be binding on the city and beyond the commission.
I don't see why not, but I'll look into it. Uh, it might, it might honestly take me a little bit if I can't.
That's fine.
Get a ready answer. We're, we're actually in between city attorneys right now. And so. I'll see if I can find something. I mean, my gut sense is, is that if we ever. If you ever had to make a decision on something that they worked on, like. You know. Which I don't know that you will for that project. I think there.
I don't think I should. It's.
They're only, they're only steps over the architectural review board. And then, I mean, otherwise. I mean, we can, for specifics beyond that, we can just always go through the like. I mean, you know, there's either, you know. You can. You can just note, I mean, the safest thing is just to note your relationship. The super safest is to recuse yourself, but really only need to recuse yourself. When you stand to gain from it.
Okay, that's fair.
Can be broad. And so it's like, well, you gain something in your position like goodwill or something, maybe like. But I mean, even then, that's pretty unlikely. And I, I have to say that I. Like we had, there are a couple of different instances where I encountered this when I worked in Happy Valley and like one of them was like. Someone who worked for DKS Associates and they do traffic engineering, but they didn't work, they worked in like a administrative portion of the. Company. And so they were just every, every time. And, and this was, this was an architectural review board. And so. All of their function was decision making. And so they were quasi judicial all the time. And so when it's not quasi judicial, I think it's. Doesn't really even need to be part of it. And then in the rare event that we do have one, we, I think we can just tackle it. But I'll. I'll, I'll look and see if I can find out more specifics because I need to go look at the, uh, charter, anyway, to answer Bill's question.
Gotcha.
I'll look at it and see if it says anything, but otherwise, congrats on the job. That's awesome.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I just, um, I don't want to put extra work on you. And thank you. I just wanted to, you know, do my due diligence because. My instinct was not to worry about it because nothing I do touches anything that we should be working on here since I'm in COVID response.
Yep.
But, you know, again, I always want to make sure that I've checked and double checks to make sure because how many terrible things have come after? I didn't think it could hurt anything, you know? All right. Well, thank you very much for liking the haircut.
Thank you.
I guess I'll see you in April then.
Okay, sounds good. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Okay, bye.